I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, made invisible by the liberty and justice of our.
Okay, move on down, motion to adopt the agenda.
With no additions, I take motion to adopt the agenda.
One second.
Oh, second.
Motion taken, second in favor?
Aye.
Uh, move on down, public comment period? Any public comments?
This is the first, we're just enjoying it tonight. Oh wait.
Hi Mike.
We have some.
You walked in during the public comment time.
Excellent.
Is that you?
That's exactly what I wanted to do.
Perfect.
Okay, sign in, I'll finish reading this. Since the bill of the council items on the agenda or not on the agenda, out of respect for the council and other in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Cuff, 128 Burt Street, Lakeview, Oregon. Like to find out what the progress has been on the graffiti over on, uh, 140. And, uh, also gave your, um, administrative assistant, I believe, Dawn, uh, the opportunity to explain why she didn't get back to me on the four dollar, or the, uh, water bill that I got for forty seven oh one, that I believe should have been forty three dollars and something else.
Um, I can speak on the graffiti because I already tried to get a bunch of people together. Then it ended up being scorching hot. So we decided to hold off. And I do know a few people have tried to get that darn graffiti off, but that brick is one of the tougher surfaces. It is a building owned by lumbermen, which technically is a leased property.
And we're talking about the same property, correct?
Yeah, I think, did you hold up a picture? One right by, right?
Yeah, it's a pro built building.
Yeah, it's technically, or pro built, sorry. Um, so it's pro built building.
Yep.
I was gonna just paint those, um, boards black. And I can't get anybody to return my calls or emails, but it's a corporation out of, I wanna say it was like Iowa or something like that.
Yeah, that.
Yeah. And they probably don't even have a clue what the building is. But I was just gonna do it at my stand.
Has there been any official correspondence to the property owners to go and say, according to, you know, uh, the town of Lakeview, that you have this much time to go and take care of the solution, we take care of the problem, and if not, then we're gonna clean it up ourselves, we'll build it?
Yeah, no, not that I've done on my part.
I don't have a number, the number I had was disconnected.
Yeah.
I don't know, the number I had was disconnected for them.
Yes, number bits?
It was a long distance number. It was somebody that said they owned the building. And when, when they went and moved, they had told me who it went back into. So we put it back into their name, and the number they gave us was not correct.
So who sends the tax bill?
The county does.
The county?
Can we look into that and find out who the property owner actually is?
That's how I got the information I got was off that, but that's not a bad idea. I don't even mind doing the labor part for free, but we can.
But we shouldn't have to.
No, but I think also if you're dealing with private property, having to.
Well, it needs to be done properly.
So when is our attorney's against that?
Yeah, it needs to be, it needs to go through the nuisance process.
So that process is something we, we have been talking about a couple of other times, Mike, and I know last meeting we met here and I sat there and I asked for that to be done. You know, to show you the room at the time, but, but ultimately, you know, any nuisance ordinance that we have to enforce, a letter needs to be sent to the property owner of record and a corrective date and action time to, to satisfy the ordinance so that it's not violation anymore. So simply put, once that letter's sent, that starts the process and it sounds like it hasn't yet, but
Okay.
I'm sure by the consent of this council, that directive.
So as a, as a taxpayer in the county and a resident of Lake County and the town of Lakeview, I would like to have that initiated. Sent to the property order and, um, and the problem resolved. It looks like crap coming into our town and I, I, I believe last time I was here, I, I talked to you about when we did move here, then my boys and I went around and we, and we cleaned up graffiti in this town. You know, and, uh, so I would just appreciate your support, you know, to get this problem taken care of because it looks like crap.
I will, I will go talk to Frankie and see if he has an idea. Well, we have nothing else, you know, I have an airless prayer. We have to spray the whole wall.
Mary, I understand, although comma, you should not have to go out and take care of the problem. You're responsible.
We get permission on the random.
I understand, but I, but you don't need to get in trouble for doing it.
I think the process is gonna be, we will get the address, we will send them a lot of dates and times and do that, you know, within the next week if we can.
Then I would appreciate that, it's just, it's just a nice word.
Yeah, thank you.
The only thing for bringing it up because, I mean, it's something I discussed two months ago and life got busy, so it's a good reminder.
Yeah.
You know what happens.
Do you know what the timeframe is for notification before we?
Well, we can board the nuisance ordinance to send it back from.
It's ten days.
Ten days, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's a short amount.
Yeah, I'm sure we have a nuisance ordinance sometime.
Somewhere in that big one.
It's ten days.
I'll, I'll get the letter out tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Wish you success, everybody.
And regular. And then, and then part two was, um, I had stopped in shortly after the town council meeting last time and talked to Dawn about the difference in my water bill, my water bill, sewer bill, of a difference of about four dollars.
And I apologize for that, Mike. I have a stack this big that I'm going through because you're not the only one. So you are in my stack, I will get to you. I just did about, what did we do, five or six today? And so I apologize, I am muddling through my pile.
Okay.
I'm trying to get to everybody the best that I can.
So is it, I mean, you probably found out what the problem was.
Well, not yet, because I'm still pushing meter reads out to get it checked. So I'm doing it as fast as I can.
Okay.
So I apologize that it's taking so long, um, longer than it should have, I just.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your concern and, Mike, you know, if it's a computer glitch.
We can fix it, easy peasy. Um, I did look at the meter reads, it was correct. I will have the guys, I'll give Jeff a thing tomorrow and have him just go re, have him go reread it.
Great.
Not a problem.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I'm the only one in the house and the cat don't know how to turn on the fire.
He doesn't have.
Are you sure? Yes, I am, he hasn't figured out how the door he tries with the gate, so. But thank you so much, Dawn.
Yeah, no problem, sorry for the inconvenience, Mike.
So I guess with that, I'll just give my next payment for the water bill.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, move on down to the whole business. Uh, the housing land advocates regarding applications.
Those are no longer on the, it's been removed the agenda, so.
Where's your knowledge?
Yeah.
Yours is probably in your box.
I've looked at my box, I don't know what happened to it, I don't know. All right, uh, this is the whole business.
Yes.
Um, all waste receiving stations, new location presented by Jeff Murphy.
I, I think, uh, everybody has, has gotten a little bit of pushback from the public on our first location for that site and, I don't know, Daryl and I maybe should have looked at it a little bit better and, and spoke with the neighbors. It, it is an approved US floor in the location, but, uh, in the interest of keeping the peace with, uh, the neighbors and, and we have an alternate site available. So we're gonna move it from, from where it was planned to be there on Third and S, and we're gonna move down on Stock Drive near our lift station down there. There's gonna be more site preparation, uh, so it's gonna be a little more expensive project, but it's, uh, something that the sewer budget can bear. And I think, uh, in the interest of keeping the peace with the public, it's, uh, well worth the extra money. I tried to get some numbers together for tonight's meeting, but, uh, the contractor we have, uh, was, was still getting the information back from the electricians, it's gonna be a little different. There's gonna be quite a bit of site work. I wouldn't even wanna guess the difference, but at this point, I really think it's a non-issue. We probably should have been in that location to begin with, so. We talked about whether we should rebid the whole project and there was a, a situation where he had already bought materials and lit climate and brought them out. And he'd also started a little bit of the project, uh, on S Street, so he had some time already involved in it, so we thought a change order to the original contract would be sufficient. He understands the situation we're in and I think he'll be as gentle as possible. So that's, uh.
I know Daryl and I went down and measured out two other spots down there for it, but they would be tight.
Yeah, well, the one we've got now is actually a little tight as well, but, um, it'll, it'll work.
But thank you, because I think it's good since people, you know, were not happy with the placement.
Yeah.
Or now there's not any houses that are where it is.
Is that like Stock Drive and Roberta, somewhat in that corner?
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, between P Street and, and Roberta on Stock Drive.
About the middle of the.
Right across from the sewer site.
Yeah. Well, that's gonna say across from the sewer site.
There's really no potential for development right there. It's, it's a good spot for it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, new business, Labor Day Parade, September seventh.
Nobody from the chamber could be here today. So they just brought as much of the information as they had over to us. So that we can see that they had all their information.
Well, it's basically the route is about the same, which normally has been, the only thing here that they're going down, uh, Center Street, third street, one back, it used to go down, all the way down to Third and then go back to the Ball Field.
They changed that last year, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
Did they?
Yeah.
Yes. It was the first year and I think it makes out better for them.
Mayor, do you just need consent on this, moving forward?
They, well, under our street closure order, it seems to be a formal motion with it. So, one is there's motion and second, um, the usual process you guys can.
All right, I make motion to accept the Labor Day Parade route as, uh, presented.
Motion taken, second in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next on there, this one full closure for September, September fifth on Saturday.
That will be the last day, correct?
That'll be the last day. It's a week longer than what it has been, but air quality hasn't been the best either. Uh, move on down, air quality flyers go out with the water bill.
I'm talking about the flyers for the, um, wood stove replacements.
Yes, yep. Did everybody get one?
Dawn, how many people taking advantage of that program so far?
Right now, we have five people.
How much, um, do we have available?
Seventy five thousand, but it doesn't all go towards wood stoves.
And it's roughly like five to ten per unit?
No.
It's also not?
Um, it depends on the unit, unit. Household income takes a big factor into it.
Oh.
It's a sliding scale, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, there, if somebody's kind of in mid-range, then there's some contribution towards it, and then it also depends on square footage of the house for the size they have to put it with.
Well, and they have to meet all the requirements. And we go in and inspect, right, Daryl?
Yeah. Just tell us where.
Yeah, I know, I'm working on it. I had to have a couple people refix their applications because they didn't manage going them out. But that's okay.
That's what we're getting, so.
Yeah, we are, yeah. And we went and bought the tarts yesterday. So we got ninety tarts. But some of those go to the prison.
Is that for covering wood?
Wood stove out there. Yeah.
So we, uh, I put that in the agenda because we need to spend the money. It's not a poll over, we need to have your help getting it out to the community that, uh, it's available to them so that we can spend it on them.
I can honestly say I've never spent so much money on tarts in my whole entire life.
And this is to remove outdated wood stoves and put in these.
To do certified.
Or certified?
They're, they're to remove, um, outdated, to put in certified.
Oh.
And not only will it be pellet stones, woods, like Blaise King, it'll be this little system right here.
People have up here.
They can also get fireplace.
Yes, too.
Wow.
Yeah, they can get inserts.
Have you talked to Buddy in the?
Um, no, I was gonna get ahold of her tomorrow regarding this because I wanna make sure I give her all the information along with what the sheds are gonna look like. So that, because I know that they have some older people in their rentals, so I'd like to make sure that they take advantage of that, and I'd like to take some down with the senior center. Because we have until March thirty first to spend the money. So I'm trying, we're trying to hurry.
Hit, hit to in so we can help you.
And maybe like Charlie, um, Pike, that would be a, would be a.
Yes, the local BSO for insurance.
Maybe somebody.
They, they actually worked with, um, the senior center as well.
Okay.
So I figure, um, I'll do, I wanna try and get some of our, um, applications out there. And then I wanna, we're gonna put even the flyers in the water bill so that they can be self-sufficient in some public lots as well. Because I don't wanna just depend on them to do all this because it's our project, so I wanna make sure they come here for their.
The other one you might wanna reach out to is DHS, because they, they can deal with some of the subsufficiency and introduce this and stuff. And the senior center does parts of that too.
Well, I can take flyers.
But that might be another place that folks that are in some, that are doing some of the tenant, some of the.
Take some flyers and ask them to hand them out for their clients.
Yeah. Okay.
Is it on our website?
Yep, it is.
And we're advertising it?
Yep.
Yeah. Maybe people just don't realize what it really is for.
And I've got flyers, I have pushed them, put them on all the agendas, I'm gonna put them on the agendas for tomorrow night too.
Okay. Move on down, I looked here in supplemental budget moving hundred thirty two thousand four hundred from depth service fund to general fund for hiring Fort Deputy with the Lake County Sheriff's Office. I thought we were taking care of that.
That, the one you guys took, the one you guys did last time, we, that last one, we had to, we, to make a budget adjustment of this nature, we have to do a public hearing first. So that's what this process is doing. The one you did the last time was the, um, school, school resource officer, which is a separate funding source and outside that contract.
All right. So when are we gonna schedule that hearing?
The hearing is now.
Okay.
Today.
Well, four twenty. Does anybody have anything comment on that?
Daryl.
Hey.
No, I haven't. If someone can share with the class.
You have a motion to move this money?
Um, Mr. Mary, close the hearing first, as the councilwoman Taylor address, you need to close the hearing first at four thirty three or four thirty four, Cal.
Four, four.
What?
Okay, wait a second.
Forty two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forty, sorry.
We still.
No, the resolution's the next one. So they, they had a public hearing on it, there was no public comment. They closed the public hearing, then they go to their next agenda item and then they can do what they want to.
We're going to hold the vote hearing four eighteen. Now we'll go on down to the resolution, nine eighty eight, authorizing transfer funds from depth service fund to the general fund to enable hiring additional officer positions of Lake County Sheriff's Office contract.
We're not gonna have a resolution in here, do we?
Yes, you can. You do?
Yes. Are you guys not looking at your agendas? I mean, seriously?
Our term ends.
We get page numbers and tabs.
You read it, but I, you want me to reread or try just like the motion?
It's a resolution, so you don't have to do the whole reading and all of that.
Okay, so I make motion to approve resolution nine eighty eight as read by Mayor in the first portion.
I'll second. You have standing this way. My turn.
Your turn.
Motion made in seconds. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move some past.
I think it's great.
We're moving it down.
So long coming and you do work.
Yeah. Okay, let's go on down, additional staff needs for the town of Lakeview. Two part-time dispatch positions, one full-time, uh, dispatch position, one full-time public works position, one full-time assistant to public works director, special project manager position.
And there's also more.
Okay, so we have two part-time.
Two.
On my other agenda.
Yeah.
Can you, can you go through the little.
Yeah. So, and, and, um, we can talk, I was gonna bring up a whole bunch of stuff that I need to just open up for discussion that I was gonna do in executive, um, session. Um, but I do, we are coming up with, uh, a lot of transition within the, the town. Uh, two part-time dispatchers we need as a floater to, uh, review the full-time people. Um, we're gonna need to, I need to change just from when we typed this up to now, I need two full-time dispatchers. Um, we need one anyways, but Tina is retiring in February. And it takes a while to train people. Um, one part-time air quality with, um, the transfer and the tradeouts of the wood stoves to clean energy or upgraded. Um, we also have a lot of people work that goes with that and, um, it, it's, it's a, a lot of work. And I need to get it off my desk, get off Dawn's desk to bring a part-time person. And going into the winter, it's, uh, air quality every day with the, um, the lights and the vibes or the checking and. Anyways, um, and this is purely discussion, this is my wish list. Um, I need a part-time planner. Um, Janine is planning on retiring in December. She may push out a little bit further, she wants to stay and help with the projects that she's got on board. So that is a TBD, but it's coming sooner than later. Um, we've got someone in public works who will be retiring within the year, could be sooner. It's hard to say. And we've got Jeff Marshall who isn't gonna be with us very long.
You're gonna retire?
I've got three years left. Yeah.
I know, it's right to do.
That's what I fixed, is train a water guy though, like, three years. Well, the reserve side.
Well, we've got Jeff who's got twenty years of experience. We also need to get a, a procedural manual done because there's nuances upon nuance, upon nuance, and we, I'd rather, um, not panic like I did twice already. Once during the pandemic and then when his mom passed, I found myself under my desk crying because I just, I don't know what he does for sure, but I know it's a lot. And it, um, made me nervous enough to put it on the docket of we need to be looking at these positions. And I've asked for Daryl and Jeff to help me in, with input on what they would like to see in these positions, what types of certifications they would like, what type of, um, education, what type of, of experience they would, um, like, and we're still working on that together so that we get someone that will fit with what, um, will work best for them because of the side departments. So.
We've been on the job description.
Yeah, yeah, job description is kind of their wish list of who their ideal.
A, a lot of the stuff that we do is, is changing quite a, and some of my guys are not really up to getting the technical aspect of, you know, the computer programs and, uh, you know, as we get the, the master plan going, everything's gonna be, you know, on variable frequency drive pumps and, uh, all be on, uh, a system that everything is tied together on one computer program and, and we have so many things to, to, we have to do to, to stay straight with the working health authority and with the DEQ and the EPA. We need somebody with some education in, in computer programming and, um.
And good with a wrench.
Yeah. We need somebody with a lot of different skills, but we definitely need a, a person that's strong technically.
Right.
So I, I'm wondering because there's a lot of, lot of jobs there. I mean, the dispatch is kind of something we've always been kind of, to go on going, hire some, hire some. Yeah, constantly it seems like. So that's nothing new, but I know that we have, I don't have my budget in front of me, I would love to be able to sit down and kind of look through. My job card. But I can't reach out, we've got full size. Can I explain the air quality one to you guys? I don't know if all of you guys understand how that works. So you get a fifteen thousand dollar grant, that person is paid out of that grant, it does not come out of town funds. Yeah. So that is how that is dispersed. So I just wanted to explain that one. I would love to have a work session regarding this because we have some transition happen. We have the water stuff coming in, which is really gonna change.
And that, and as we've kind of talked about, we're budgeting in, and that, I mean, just that system alone plus the geothermal stuff and whatever water creek looks like, that's, that's gonna be extra staffing, I mean, there's just no way that it can't be. So that's, that's part of that one public works position, correct? So it's, it's part of that, that's, that's assumed with that, so. I, I think that would make sense for the council to do a work session where you just have some time to just talk about staffing needs and your budgetary requirements. So I, I think it's a.
Um, but I would also like to have Jeff and Daryl and involved with the discussion because
Oh, Jeff, thanks.
they're the ones that are out there, they know what's coming online, they know that we've got the door thing going, we've got a ten million dollar project going, we've got a one point six million dollar project, we've got that shed thing that we removed and the tall waste, um.
I would, yeah, like.
It's a lot.
Pretty much, except I mean, fire's kind of been fired, so, or dispatch, they won't come.
Right, and it's, it's a lot, um, it's a lot.
Yeah, I would love to have a work session because I think with our budget, we kind of left some legal room, but we also know that it's gonna be a shortfall this year, for the next five years potentially. I'd love to have a work session as much as I hate having another meeting, um, if we can regarding all of this sooner or later so you can get to work on your immediate needs more, so.
We have a town council meeting September eighth, we do it at three o'clock.
This probably should be a special set for you guys, you guys have.
No, no. Um, what about the ninth, I'll be gone that whole week.
You better block out some time for that.
Oh, I wanna get a team, I wanna get the school and students, ball cap, how about?
I'm, I know, next week. Uh. Though the first through the fourth.
So you say like they don't say. Recording, right?
No. As long as we're recording.
Yeah.
So. Like, like you said, Mayor, I, I'm all for this work session sooner or later because it needs to get everybody hired as soon as possible to get into the positions that we need filled. Um, I'm okay with it next week. Um, main, main thing is, I think you just want to come prepared, and which would be at least job descriptions, knowing if these are union or not and what salary.
So, um, next one.
I will.
Um, I'm working right now with Steven Schuback and, and Jeff. I do have a draft that I wanted to share with everyone about the, the public works administrative assistant, so however we wanna call that, it, it doesn't matter to me, but I do have a draft of that, and as the drafts begin to come available, I will send them forward to you so that everybody can look at them and mark them up, do whatever, but, um, you know, everybody needs to be involved.
So next week, I'm gonna be, I have a nephew, nephew, he's gonna. So next week, I'm gonna be, I have to have a nephew, nephew, he's gotta have her part stuff done. And I think we'll be back on the third.
You leave it on this day or Jeff on?
I can make it, uh, Daryl and I'll get Jeff that copy to me.
When are you going, that?
What if you guys did on the fourth then?
That would work, I mean.
I'll be up on the fourth.
We don't have there.
That's surprising.
That's a friend. If you want me there, I will be able.
No, I'm leaving. I'm the first.
I thought you were gonna be down the seventh, third.
What about the thirty-first?
I'm home on the third.
Also unavailable.
But you're playing.
No, not the thirty-fourth. Not the third.
Hold on, I'm finding out.
Labor Day is later than normal, so.
Let's do it Thursday this week. It'll be super fun.
Three meetings in one week, you're right. I mean, I don't wanna be there.
Well, I don't think, I won't be here Thursday.
Yeah, that's.
I'll be getting my.
I'm okay with any day next week, really.
So.
Go Wednesday.
You guys have Friday at Fort Bill? Do Jeff and Daryl have Friday at Fort Bill?
I feel like Friday the fourth.
It's not my ideal day, but yeah.
And I suggest you guys start at three.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, Friday the fourth and three o'clock.
Cause I already closed the office on Sunday.
Friday the fourth won't work. People are, people are coming to town.
You guys got a priority.
Can we do it in the morning?
Jeff's got his mom's schedule.
That whole day, I mean.
Boom.
Friday won't work.
I can do, I can do three, four, three, five on the third.
Do it on Sunday?
Well, Daryl won't be here on the third.
Thursday the third, but who else is here?
Ray, Ray.
Daryl will be here.
Um.
How about the week of the fourteenth?
Hey.
That's, I know it's a ways off, but.
Well, that's.
That's the only week it looks like it's gonna work for everybody.
You know, that's better for me because in the meantime, I can get.
Fourteenth, it doesn't, we can't go ahead with the, with the dispatcher. It's the other stuff that we really need to crunch on.
Well, the dispatcher, none of that's really changing. Those are standard positions, so.
No, that's, that's an already done deal, but.
I'm, I, I have the seventeenth and eighteenth available for you guys in the afternoon.
God, your schedule is killing me.
Well, you don't have a fifteenth. Just the, sixteen is one.
What, what does that week of the third emergency for? What day is your best day there?
The end of the week. Uh, I can't do any Mondays because I'm covering front of attorney my office and dealing cancer treatments, so.
Well. Hey, so we're giving the fourteenth, right?
Uh, I can't do any Mondays.
You can be here until the seventeenth.
Just to the seventeen, seventeen.
Okay.
All right.
Three block.
Three block on the seven.
Point, point next we will have some stuff.
Plus, I think we probably will have most of, or all of the job descriptions ready for you. The draft is pretty good to look at at that point.
That's true. I know we wanna rush on it, but hopefully we'll have more, bring in a little more time for the show.
If, if it's not a new position.
Right, obviously, yeah. Although the public works one kind of might be because that's, it's, like you said, we're a little different.
It's a little different than like an assistant manager, like for revenues.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about the manager per se.
We need one regular, one regular employee and then we need one specialized.
Right.
Right.
So you need two.
And the regular is replacing somebody retiring.
Correct.
And the specialized would be more like yours, right?
No, the specialized is more, more like your, um, it's more specialized. We're talking grunt work, not technical one like the water.
That one can be eight months off or something.
Okay.
Throw it when you're done.
Okay.
You can make it till next, but.
September seventeenth?
Can we just book any other appointments now, right now, for next month or two or three? It's supposed to be not busy all.
Christmas is coming. All right, now we've got, we've got all that out of the way. Is there anything else? There are none, we'll adjourn right from meeting. Four thirty-three? Six oh four. All right, now we're back in the regular set.
Okay.
We get just one minute.
So. Hey, 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 come on.
Okay, so.
I don't wanna be here all night.
Let's do this.
It's clocked now, I'm getting hungry.
So we received a donation of twenty-three thousand, it's some change, um, as a gift to the pool. And we have as a budget item, uh, twenty-seven thousand seven seventy-eight. I would like to start to put together some RFPs after the swimming pool closes to start work on the electrical because they can work through the winter if we need them to, on the weather. And the roof too, or is that separate?
Yeah, the, the, the roof can be done. I'd like to see you.
We need to work yet.
You guys.
We have to go first and we're also gonna work with, um, Energy Organ because they are looking at giving us, I suppose, a two dollars a square foot credit on doing the roof as long as we insulated and we put in the roof code. So there's some things that we'll work on.
So we can say the roof possibly.
Right, and we'll get more into this after it closes because I've got, uh, Spence Rogan and Sazma is gonna help put some stuff together and we already started working with Energy Organ on light, on some light fixtures and the roof.
Well, also I wanted to bring up was it's my idea to do electrical, but.
I think it's kind of top priority, unfortunately.
That's the major safety issue with that building.
But we need to decide together.
Well, we need to look at how it's gonna fit in the project. You don't wanna go in and do electrical and have to rip a bunch of it out to continue with the project, so.
We should do that and then depending on the money left over and then see what the roof will be.
Kind of a general work session, discuss the plans for next year.
Okay, but, um, I think we could start doing electrical right away so we don't have to worry about kids next year.
Well, I think let's do the evaluation with a couple of the contractors that were willing to step in and do that evaluation of the building to make sure that we're not doing something that's gonna tear out the.
We got.
Right, right. That's why I use the Sazma and Rogan, they're both, were contractors, uh, retired contractors, so they would be the ones to look at.
Okay, so they would be giving us advice and then we'd have to.
Yeah, both of them have agreed to be on that committee for the pool.
Yeah, I remember that, but I mean, they actually do the work, we have to have that certified.
Right, you have to have a license.
Current certification. Okay, oh, we're done.
No, we're on, we're still on.
No, this, this is just.
Yeah. That's why we need.
Two, four, four.
Yeah, I think you're able to do it. I think.
Maybe, maybe we need to look and buy another recorder.
Okay, so we need to look at getting bids and figuring out what. Person announces to the electrical. And then when we have a work session, we can bring that to people.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we can start pricing some stuff out so we can get worth done because we do have money to do.
Hey, anybody have anything else?
There's on the agendas, can we get heads back on, um, council updates and manager update each time, just so it's an agenda item, so you can talk about anything with us as on the agenda that you would. And then if we have anything specific we're working on that we can look for.
Yeah, that's why those are normally a standard.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, we haven't had a month.
I know, I.
I, I, I was wondering about that, too.
Well, I think the idea was they were trying to put them with the, um, department reports, but they're unfortunately the shells.
I didn't even know they were missing.
I know, that's why I just bring them up like throughout the session.
Yeah, department reports, I mean, there's still.
There's still town jobs.
Daryl sort of and.
Fire.
Well, I have these bigger projects starting up where they have to go.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? There are none? We'll close the regular session at, uh, six oh eight.